First, some of the challenges to our productivity in FY 2020. If you remember, in May 2019, we had a flood event. And while responding to the initial flood event itself is very intense and important, a lot of people don't realize, once that flood recedes, there's a tremendous amount of work that happens after that. During FY 2020, we were dealing with the FEMA documentation for reimbursement for our expenses during and responding to the flood. Funded projects for Fort Ammoner, silt removal at Cockwood Creek, wild water intake, and a new program for us, the ODOT Emergency Management Relief Fund for some of our projects. A lot of paperwork, design, bidding, very time consuming. Then we're also working on an OWRB grant application, dealing with the spillway at Guthrie Lake. Again, that ties back to the flood event. And in COVID-19, we all know that's changed our life and it's consumed a lot of time. Since COVID-19, just in my office, there's some weeks that, early on, I didn't do anything but COVID-19, preparing for the court case, developing safety guidelines for public facilities, what's open, what's closed. It consumed our life dramatically, at least initially, and still impacts our lives today. And then governing body turnover, orientation, learning curve, team building challenge. We gained three new council members in May of 2019. In August, we had one resign and reappointed a former council member. And in January 2020, we had one that resigned, had a former council member appointed to that position. So we've had some transition in our governing body, which has provided some challenges as far as teamwork. First slide, financial stability. And in my mind, that's the beginning. And if you look at this slide, back in FY 2017, and I come about the middle of that budget year, but the city started with $386,000 in the general fund. Mid-year budget review, we determined that there was not adequate funding to meet payroll. And we went through a readjustment of the budget, ended up cutting 10 positions at that time. And we didn't even have the cash flow to make the interest payments on a bond issue for the wastewater treatment plant at that time. So our financial position was not the strongest in 2017. If you look at this chart, in general fund, just under $400,000. Our projected balance at the end of this year, beginning of FY 21, $1.9 million. So in a very few short years, our financial positions changed dramatically. Public Works Authority, from $700,000 to almost $2 million. Our stabilization fund, general fund was pretty close at the time, but it now has over $1 million, which is the target. The Public Works Authority Stabilization Fund is at $877,000 now. We will be taking $120,000 from the unfunded balance of the Public Works Authority and moving that to that stabilization fund to get us to the million dollar mark. Our financial stability has improved substantially over the last few years. Next, volatility of sales tax. And that's another reason to look at having a fund balance. As you can see, there's a lot of peaks and valleys. And you try to shave that so that you have revenue to fill in the valleys. And you don't spend all your money when you have a peak, so that you have resources to fill those valleys. In 2017, it went up 4%. In FY 18, our sales tax rate went up 9%. Then in '19, it dropped 7%. So that's a significant change. And this year, even with COVID-19, it appears we'll end up with 7.5%. We continue to lobby or advocate to the legislature, diversification of the tax base to fund Oklahoma municipalities. Averrore property tax should be a component of a healthy revenue stream to fund city government. It's a more stable resource. And I go through additional explanations of why we should have a mix of sales tax and averrore taxes as our funding base. The next one is use tax. In FY 16, it was $260,000. I'm rounding these numbers off. And it looks like in FY 20, we'll end the year with $811,000. And that has been predominantly the transition, where internet sales now pays sales tax, and it comes to us through a use tax. So all of these vendors, Amazon, eBay, Wayfair, Chewy. Clearly, that was a big change for us from a revenue standpoint, is when those internet sales started paying use tax. The next slide in the yellow, we got one month of sales tax in FY 2016. And then four years of history, $5 million so far. We jump-started by borrowing $3 million upfront. So we would have roughly $8 million that we could spend at this point without borrowing. Take those first four years and average them and use that as a flat. Over the 15-year life of the 3/4% sales tax, it would generate about $19.5 million. If you project over the remaining balance of the sales tax life, at a 2% growth rate, you'd have $22 million. If you use 3%, you'd have $23 million. So you have somewhere between $19 million and $23 million that you can expect. Can't spend it all today unless you borrow it, because the money from FY 21 to FY 2031 won't hit your bank account until that year gets here. If you spend the full $19 million or $20 million today, you would have to borrow funds to do that. On the salmon collar one, I've tried to list all the projects that we have either committed funds to or have already completed. Of course, there's some big ones, the wastewater treatment plant. We've committed to roughly put $4 million out of this sales tax source towards the wastewater treatment plant to do the industrial park and make it shovel-ready. Our initial estimate's 4.3. We committed $1 million through Owens Field Land and Water Conservation Fund grant as match money. We have projected $600,000 for improvements to Soonorose in the future. And then the annual street overlay, some of this has been spent, but we tried to put money aside each year for an overlay project, $2.6 million. And then I tried to put it in order of the amount of the rest of them. And you can see that the interest on the $3 million that was borrowed to kickstart the program, you're going to spend about $600,000. So that $3 million costs you $600,000. So borrow money to do projects feeds into the capital that you have, because you have to project for paying the interest. So you've spent or committed, or encumbered, whatever term you want to use, $18 million. You've got, if you look at the most conservative, $19.5, you've got another $1.5 million to commit. So you're not going to be able to have a retreat every year and keep adding projects. You're going to have to take something off the table if you put something on. And of course, a lot of these have already been committed. Start talking about priorities for next year, this is something you need to keep in mind. Of course, I don't think it's all doom and gloom. There are some additional funding options that we can pursue. Otherwise, when we get to 2022, 2023, there's going to be a gap between there and 2031, where we're not going to do any large projects, at least not out of the 3/4% sales tax. But additional funding, of course, is federal and state grants, foundations, both public and private, public and private partnerships with firms in our community, or firms that do business in our community, things like Crown Fundy. And then if you grow up on the farm, you always learn the trick to rub two nickels together to make a quarter. And so that's an option as well. And sometimes that's by doing a lot of the work yourself, rather than paying for all of it. Some good things that's been happening in our community, residential building permits issued over the last 12 months. We've had 12 new home constructions started. We had eight existing homes, a lot of them in our downtown area that were remodeled. So we're seeing more interest in the last year in starting or remodeling homes and people moving into our community. Right now, we're working with Ideal Homes. This is the first draft of their potential plan unit development to develop Phase Two Emission Hills. There is some flood plumbing challenges in Phase Two, and some sewer issues because of the cost to put in a lift station. It may not work out quite like this, but their initial PUD Plan Unit Development Plan, 322 new lots would be available for build-out. Right now, I believe Mission Hills Phase One is almost complete with the current construction. Another opportunity that we need to decide if we want to pursue and take interest in, it's a long ways off yet. The, of course, the governor and the legislature are in dispute over who has the authority and how to do it. So some of those issues will have to be resolved. But the Oto Missouri Tribe is headquartered out of Red Rock, and the Katoa Tribe out of Talikwau have both expressed interest and are planning their effort to build a destination casino on I-35 in the Guthrie area. We've had an initial visit with the leadership of both of those tribes, and they are looking forward to a partnership with the City of Guthrie to develop that. Of course, with a destination casino, there's more than just the gaming activities. One of them is projecting a motel with 500 rooms, which would make us a very good community for conventions with the rooms we have now and with these additional rooms. Entertainment venues where you have concerts, convention centers, pools with water parks. The Oto already has an indoor water park at their casino just south of the Kansas border. From a policy standpoint, the city council will need to decide if we want to make that one of our legislative agenda items for the next legislative session. We have an opportunity to attract more young families, entrepreneurs, and young professionals, skilled workers to our community. There has been, in recent years, a trend of young people moving from large urban centers to mid-sized and small communities. And now with COVID-19, virtual work has went mainstream, and all of a sudden, in a big way. And I don't think that trend's going to change. I think we'll continue to see a lot of remote and virtual work, where they can work anywhere and live anywhere. But capitalizing on that is not just going to happen. Communities have to be deliberate and proactive to create conditions to attract and keep young people. I think, and some of this is just my professional, my personal professional opinion, attracting this type of workforce is also where business and industry wants to locate because of the type of talent. And it starts with quality education, both secondary, career tech, and higher education. Of course, we have passed two bond issues for our school district in 2015 and 2019. And we continue to make substantial upgrades to our local school system. And Meridian Tech is building a satellite campus in town now on Division Street. And we have higher education in a very close distance to us for higher education. Next item, I think, important, of course, is access to healthcare. We've seen many rural hospitals closed throughout Oklahoma, and we need to make sure that we support and work with our local hospital to maintain that facility. And of course, as you lose healthcare facilities or hospitals, then ambulance service becomes even more important for access to healthcare in other communities. And right now, we serve about 3, 2/3 of the county with our ambulance service. Another thing that is important to attract youth and young families to the community is they expect certain amenities. They want places that have a variety of restaurants, bars, craft beer stores, quirky shops and boutiques. They like to be in buildings that have character, renovated factories, warehouses, historic buildings. And they also pay attention to programming such as festivals, art walks, that bring people out and give them a reason to shop, eat, and drink at local establishments. So all of the arts in any form is important to a community when you're trying to attract entrepreneurs and young professionals in all of the festivals. We need to make sure that we have plenty of opportunity moving in. They already have a job, but they may want to start up a side venture. So having a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem that provides us resources and support will be important. We need to make sure that we have good training and development mentoring networks for them to be through the Chamber of Commerce, Meridian Tech, and then startup business incubators. Affordable housing for young families and young entrepreneurs. And I think that with the remodel of the older homes and some of the new construction are in the affordable range. At some point, I think we need to encourage market-rate apartment complex with amenities geared towards young professionals. And I'm not talking about those that are funded with tax credits, but actually market-rate apartments that are not subsidized. Something that we've not had funding sources to do a lot with yet, but natural resources like lakes and rivers. Young professionals, young families, they like a work-life balance. It's very important to them. They're drawn to small communities with a less frantic pace of life and outdoor recreation. With Guthrie Lake and Liberty Lake, there's a lot of opportunities for us to make those more attractive for outdoor activities for not only individuals that live in our community, but for visitors as well. Examples of placemaking efforts we've done to date, of course, we did Banner Park, we've done Disc Golf, we upgraded tennis courts, basketball courts, we're doing Mineral Wealth Park. So we have started doing placemaking projects to make our community more attractive to young families. Another component that makes us attractive to young families and also provides revenue to our community is historic culture, special events, tourism attractions. This is a primary component of our local economy. A lot of times, when people think about economic development, they think of the more traditional economic development, industry, and retail. In our case, one of the biggest components of our local economy is our tourism and special events. And film is becoming a bigger part of that as well. You can see the highlight of the special events that we have in our community now. And of course, with COVID-19 and the shutdown of a lot of our special events this year, Lazy Arena has really been a great resource, because they've been able to capture some of the events that were not going to happen in the state that they traditionally were in. And Lazy E has done a very diligent job of attracting those. Some we may retain, some we may not next year, but it's been a blessing this year. And the city staff has done a lot of work with Lazy E Arena to help attract those events to town. Of course, the Yoman job was done by Lazy Arena, but there was a lot of assistance from the city. And Lazy E, of course, PBR was here earlier. Rural Berthus has been a fixture. Bicycling has become more and more of a thing, bringing people to our community. One thing I would point out is the theater. It brings a lot of community when they have their shows from Norman, Edmond, Oklahoma City, Midwest City, all over the metro area. They normally dine and then go to the Pilot Theater to watch a show. They've been shut down, probably won't reopen until after the first year. There's a lot of arts that we need to be very aware of that have financial constraints that have been created by the COVID-19. And we probably need to take a serious look at those, and do we need to provide some dollars to make sure that they survive in our community, because they're very important assets. So we may have to look at some stimulus funds for some of those activities. I think there's potential growth in our tourism and special event industry. I think we can add, maybe not necessarily these particular events, a Bloom Festival, more large-size concerts, similar to Muffin and Sons, maybe not that big. At the Lakes, there's bicycle opportunities. You can have bicycle events that bring 200, 300, 400 people to your community. And then with the State Capitol Publishing Building and other facilities we have downtown, traveling museum exhibits. I know when I was in Coffeyville, we had a Smith zoning exhibit that showed what life was in the 1950s. And all the area schools in southeast Kansas had day field trips to see that exhibit. And it brought a lot of people to the community. And so I think there's potential, maybe not these exact ones, but I think we need to continue to invest and grow our tourist economy. Film industry, we have been fortunate that we have been able to attract many films. We've been working very diligently to establish relationships with investors, producers, directors of those films. We're seeing repeat business. The Love on Repeat director and producer, they've already been here two years in a row, and they are planning to come back in January to film two more movies in our community. The Reagan movie is one that they're in town now. That's a multimillion-dollar motion picture about the life of President Reagan, and they will make quite a presence in our community. I think they're even going to make it snow on one of our streets as far as the movie. That'll be pretty interesting to see. We have really grown our film industry, and it has paid some good dividends for us. If we want to continue to grow that, this is a quote from Lieutenant Governor Matt Pennell, "For us to get further, movie production and television shows filmed in state Oklahoma, we need soundstage infrastructure. We need a permanent workforce." When we have movies coming to town, they're always looking for places to build the set. And right now, we predominantly use the Guthrie Army. We have police vehicles and equipment and armor, we have fire trucks, we have parks equipment. We move all that out, let them use it, we move it all back in. So it is a challenge, but we try to accommodate movies. Some options, we are looking at the potential purchase of some hangars at the airport. And if we do that, we could use that as a multi-purpose while we're trying to recruit an aviation-related industry to one of those hangars. We could make it available to movies as a soundstage to build their sets, where they could have a controlled environment inside. We are building a shovel-ready industrial park. And if we look in the future to build a spec building, this is one from Mid-America, industrial park as an example, we could use it to help recruit industries. And we could also use it as a soundstage for movies as well. I will tell you that industries, I'm not seeing a study recently, but used to, 75% of industries looked at towns that had existing buildings first as a first cut, because it's cheaper to buy an existing building normally. And number two, they can get in and get started quicker with their start. Industries may take a long time to decide where they want to grow and expand, but once they make that decision, they're ready to go. Having a facility is kind of like the example I always use, a shoe store, where you have a shoe store, but you don't have any shoes on the shelf. Same thing with this concept. It helps attract people to look. Majority of the prospects that we get through Department of Commerce and our partnership with the Oklahoma City Chamber are predominantly looking for communities that have existing structures. Now, many times, they will come to your community and see that structure. If they like your community, if that spec building doesn't meet their exact needs, they will build in your community. But if they don't see your community, that's never going to happen. Music industry is very important. Justin has been working on many projects relative to the music industry, and I believe he will do some presentations in the near future, City Council, on some of those. Traditional retail recruitment, on the left-hand side is an example of the brochure that we use. We try to highlight the demographic themes that we've been told are the key elements that retail look at to make their initial decision whether to explore your community further. We have greenfield sites that we promote, and we have existing retail sites. Our biggest challenge, though, is even though within a 15-mile radius, we have 155,000 population, they discount that because they say, "Well, why do that's Edmond?" So explaining to them that we are more than a town of just 11,000 people, there's more here. We have the Lazy E Arena, it brings in over 400,000 visitors a year. We have Langston University next to us. We have I-35 and that traffic. We try to make all those pitches, but they concentrate a lot on just our basic population. And that is another reason why the census is important. But if you look at also competing against Edmond, population-wise, we're at 11,000, Edmond's at 91. If you look at the median household income, which is a big factor to recruit retailers, median household income in the United States is $53,000, and Edmond it's $71,000, and Guthrie it's $40,000. So where's that retailer going to go? We have a challenge when recruiting retailers. Residents below poverty rate. In Guthrie, it's 21%, and Edmond is 10%. So recruiting retail to our community is a challenge. We keep talking about developing the economy in our downtown area. One of the things I think that we could do, because when you go to retail trade shows, there's not mom and pops at stores at those things where they're going to open a one- or two-person boutique in downtown. These are big retailers you see. There's not, there's not a convention to go recruit small businesses that may be a one- or two-person operation in a downtown. If we were to look at a downtown retail food incubator, we could even do it in a leased building where we lease it for three, four, five years rather than buy it. Incubators are multi-tenant facilities with onsite management. Managers direct a business incubator program to produce successful firms that leave the program financially viable and freestanding. They move out to their own storefronts. Depending on size and building layout, flexible space that can be easily modified as the mix of your tenants change. But retail and food vendor cubicles, this would be similar to Mother Road Market in Tulsa, which was built by a private foundation fund. Retail and food vendor cubicles, a small brew pub, Perry Ale, which is in Oklahoma City, is in a multi-tenant building rather than a standalone building, as an example. Coworker space, I think, you know, for the second floor, use it for coworker space. As you have virtual workers, they're not always going to want to work out of their home, they're going to look for a location. And having coworker space in town will be very attractive to people that are virtual working. Mid-sized meeting room, common areas where you could have a small entertainment venue for weekend music or art shows, maybe a weekend farmer's market. for weekend music or art shows, maybe a weekend farmer's market. If we're going to talk about developing more retail in our downtown, I think this is something that we should take a serious look at. But again, that's just my opinion. In the comp plan back in 2000, the two areas identified were Interstate 35 and Airport. Those are the two areas that was recommended and they still seem to be our best option as far as industrial development. And of course, I-35 would be the traditional industries. Airport would be those that are aviation-related. We're already looking at shovel-ready industrial parks. And I talked about the potential of the spec building. We are looking at the potential of buying some of the hangars, existing hangars at the airport. We can use those to try to recruit aviation-related businesses to some of those hangars. And over time, this is not going to happen overnight, but there is always funding each year to build new terminals. If you take the building 1A at the airport, that's not in the best of shape, has some age to it, immensely tear it down and build a state-of-the-art airport terminal there using funding from the Oklahoma Aeronautics and FAA. Then I think with the improvements for access to runway, buy acreage in this area or an aviation business park. It's not going to happen overnight because you've got to think of the future.